We call the special meeting for Thursday, February the second, twenty twenty-three at five thirty-one.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We ask that you guide the council, help them to make the right decisions and the best decisions for the community and the city. Lead us to do your will in all that we do and keep us all safe, including Mr. Gary as he goes down for his visit to Shands. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beautiful. Beautiful period of war length from the freeze.
Those are the ones that were more than fifty dollars. Most of them were real small.
Yeah, I saw. It was pretty small. That one was a lot. What happened there?
Let me look at him and see what one is. Because Jason's here, he can tell us. The three hundred dollar one?
Yeah.
That's the one on Jackson Avenue?
That's the lady over here.
They didn't live in town.
That's the one that was...
It wasn't home with them?
They were broke. It was under the house, and they were out of town. But it has been fixed.
That were over fifty dollars. Most of them were really small. So we just put the ones over fifty dollars. It's just a few. It's not too bad, but...
It could have been a lot worse.
Like eight dollars, eleven dollars. I have the other list here, but I just did the ones over fifty in here. Total, all being adjusted, is eleven hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents for the entire city for the big freeze.
Goodness.
You said eleven twenty-nine fifty?
Fifty-three.
Is that what you're calling it? A big freeze?
Yeah. For Vernon, that's a big freeze.
It was a real big freeze. And I understand that.
My heat broke that week, so...
That's what I kept thinking, because mine was just steady going. I said, Lord, this thing cut off.
Does anybody have any issues with these?
No.
So do I have a motion to approve the adjustments?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Discussion, call the mayor?
Right.
Motion carried. Number two, we've gone in those six days here. I think everybody has a letter from Timothy in the package. I guess I'll start and say that the reason that we're having this meeting on this... That's all.
Are they gone?
Yeah, they're gone.
Is that better? The reason for this discussion, this meeting, and it being a special meeting tonight is because there's been some lack of communication or miscommunication on what's the gym being wrecked and what this business is. And the business is open, it's operational. The problem is, is that there's never any discussion with council or approval on rates, how we were gonna break up water lots, what the term was gonna be. There's been no... Basically, there's been no discussion whatsoever. In three years that I've been here, when I first came on, it was mentioned one time that there was gonna be a start, and it was my understanding that Mr. Garner was gonna, you know, figure out what he was gonna do, bring it back to council. I remember Joey, who's not here tonight, saying something online, I said, I believe what was being asked for was... He was gonna do some work so he would get some leeway on lease or rent for a certain amount of time, but that was the end of the discussion. It has not been brought to my attention, to this board, to anybody that was on here previously, to my knowledge. So basically, what we have is a good thing. We have another business, and that's what... That was one of the reasons that this particular building was taken over, was to bring business back to Vernon. So I'm real excited about that. However, we've got some issues. We've gotta get things in place. We've gotta come up with an agreement. We've gotta figure out what we're gonna do, price-wise and all that, because basically it moved forward and was online before I was aware of it. I don't know about the rest of you all, but it's online. The insurance has been terminated, but that was the reason that the attorney said that we needed a call meet, because we needed the insurance, which we have received, and it's correct.
Yes.
But there's a lot of things that we need to figure out.
Well, citizen call me. That's what I found out. We called me.
We're just talking about part of that building. We're not talking about the gym, like...
See, that's been the thing. And correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, and nobody's here haunting me, we... This is just, the gun was jumped. We did things without putting everything in place first. So wreck aside, has nothing to do with the basketball gym. It's a business gym. That's open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Back here, that used to be, in my day, it was the two typing rooms. Before that, it was cafeteria. The building before you get to our basketball gym, right up in front. It's open for business. There's clientele going in and out. It looks to be doing pretty good from the vehicles I've seen, but there's just some things that we all need to agree on. We need to know what we're gonna do, let the attorney draw it up. And that's why we're here. We need to figure out some things. Now, he has outlined here the work that he's done. I had went and looked outside. I have not been inside. I know there's surveillance up. There's a code on the door. I don't know, because I have not been inside. I'm assuming that he's outlined all the work that he's done. This is what I'm looking at. My question is, do you have, all these hours that you're talking about and all the materials, do you have receipts or anything that you can show on paper of?
I could pull my... For the materials, I could pull my Home Depot account from where I went and bought it. It would take somewhere to get it, but yes, ma'am.
Did you purchase your equipment in there, too? Okay, you have the receipts for that?
It was bought in a couple of different lots and a couple of different agreements. Some of it's been cash, and then some of it's been... But that's personal assets. I would... So I don't know if I consider that as part of...
No, those things that you put in there belong to you. It has nothing to do with the city, nothing to do with wreck whatsoever, right? And this is completely, again, separate from wreck. This is a personal business.
Correct.
It's not nonprofit. It's a profit business.
But I did get to go in when we started, and I've seen it since. And he did amazing stuff in there.
Well, that was, just to kind of kind of put my side on that, is I have had, you know, council members in, the mayor in, had multiple conversations with several council members. And so with that, I get it. I'm young, as far as business is concerned. I did jump the gun. It was costing me, it started costing me a couple hundred dollars a month regularly, and that's why when I moved forward, and then the minute the issue was brought forward, I went duh, because I did mess up in that regard, as far as not having the lease. And so I did jump the gun there. And it kind of smacked me in the face. After it kind of got brought to my attention, I realized that I did, I did do that. So... But yeah, I put quite a bit into it, but I didn't really, I wasn't really concentrating on keeping full records, so I didn't write everything down, because, you know, my ultimate goal was, hopefully, you would just see the difference, see the improvement in the building. And then I'm not in here to make a major, like, I'm not, I'm not gonna make major money on it. My goal is just to have something else for the community to do. And then on top of that is, it's buildings that haven't been used in twenty years, and I'm improving in that way. If, say, for instance, something happens, and I do good, and I go off and I move, then y'all can immediately listen after that point. And so I didn't keep excellent records as far as what I put on the building, but if I need to pull them together, I definitely can. So that's why I haven't really supplied that to them.
But Timothy, when you do something like that, you can't just take one council member or two councils.
No.
There's five people here.
I can't do that.
And you should have came to the council, right out there, and told all of us what you were doing.
After y'all made the first conversation of this, the council should have got back in the house, so it's all our fault. I'm just trying to be reasonable.
Exactly. Well, that's the reason we draw the meeting, because we found out about it. We realized that there was a niche, there was a liability to the city, because there was no insurance in place.
There was no check on there, and that's why that became a liability. You know, because like I said, some person called me about it. I was like, they said, you got a jam in Vernon now? I'm like, I don't know.
Well, and personally talking to me or anybody along this road isn't...
And I take responsibility. Like I said, I realize, the minute the issue was brought up in that regard, I literally just palm to the face.
None of us had the authority by ourselves to tell you to go forth with anything.
Exactly.
Well, my view of it is this, I'm glad that the insurance is in place. I'm glad that you got fixed up. It's another business for Vernon. My thing is, just like the people that contacted me about it, we haven't done a lot of this in the past. The paperwork was done before things started. We have to set some sort of price at some point. I mean, it can't be, in my opinion, a free operation, and you benefit. I mean, it's your business. I appreciate, you know, the fact that the building's fixed up. It has been sitting dormant. I'd like to see a lot more of that. I'd like to see, you know, other businesses come in, and we talked about that. We just set a price on a room at one of the last couple of meetings that we had, for one of the rooms here in front. My thing is, we need to get together. We need to get something in writing, figure out what kind of leeway we're gonna give, or, which is the reason I ask you about the receipts. What kind of leeway are we gonna give? You know, we've had somebody else do this with another one of our buildings, and it was set in advance. Insurance was put forward what was gonna be fixed, a timeline, and then we would discuss rent. That same person has come back and asked an extension due to circumstances of COVID and all that, but we still have the documentation in place. That's, to me, that's all this is, is that we just need to get together on putting something in writing. We need a contract.
We need, because we have to have a lease.
Yeah.
Because we have to have some guidelines here.
According to the attorney, which...
Maybe she can draw up some, because we do have to have a lease.
She requested the insurance, which, like I said, has been provided, so now we need to figure out what we're gonna do on paper, and have it drawn up and agreed to by everybody.
With everything that he's put into it and stuff like this, what I'm looking at here, now, I'm just gonna say this, I mean, he's not gonna make a whole bunch of money. We are in Vernon. And he, too many of us, going in there working out. I mean, there's something that is, that's gonna do it.
Well, I'm planning on, I'm gonna make sure the paperwork was in the right, since you're gonna look this way when you said that.
I know. I was looking at me, but the thing is, is this, and this is just my opinion, with everything that he's done, this time that he's got into it, for the first year, let him do his thing. It's just free. And then after that, he signed a five-year contract for three hundred fifty dollars a month, plus water and sewage. And lots.
Give the water and sewage, is it separate now?
It is not separate.
It's not separate.
It is not separate. That's what I'm saying. We'll have to figure, we'll have to...
But that's a whole building back there, and we're renting.
It's thirty-six hundred square feet, and we're renting, we set to rent one of these classrooms at six hundred dollars a month, so I think we're getting this kind of stretchment a little on the left side of things.
I just don't think it is, I mean, we still... Are we putting, are we putting the labor in to getting the rooms fixed?
And Miss Mary did that.
Huh?
For Mary to fix.
I fixed it though. Yeah, you could see the brick wall from there.
Yeah, she thinks that it's not...
But that's, in reality, when it comes down to it, it's not it's not her responsibility to fix something that belongs to the city. We should be fixing that. We should be taking care of it. We've not been doing it over the years, and now all of a sudden, you know, if we're going to rent stuff, we need to fix it.
Okay, well, that's all well and good, but you'll go back to the original discussion. He was gonna fix it and keep up with everything, and the city was gonna come to an agreement.
And we didn't. We dropped the ball.
And we didn't. But we were talking about two different things here. Go back to the other person that has a business at one of our buildings. They came to us with the drawdown paperwork, insurance, and said, listen, I'm willing to do this if I get this much off for this amount of time. The only problem here with any of this is it hasn't been done. That's why we're here tonight, is to try to do it.
I'm just, I'm just throwing suggestions out there.
And I'm not arguing that way. I'm just saying...
I just, I just don't see where we're going to make a whole bunch of money whenever he's not. If he can't make money, how can you make money?
I understand that, but also, we've got to think about the fact that that's on our electric. According to Candace, we have two bills for this.
Right.
And the fees went at four hundred dollars a month. So the city's incurred expenses.
Well, that's the reason I said, three hundred fifty dollars rent, plus water, sewage, and lots.
That's what we're talking about.
We can separate the waters easily.
Right.
Power, we just have to get somebody to look at it, separate it, put a meter in.
Well, I thought a lot of the buildings back then somehow meters are their own back there.
There should be. All that's, all that's connected there.
There is. There's a giant grid work right back here.
And it's connected to that building.
It's, it's, they're all, all of them are running into that.
Everything is connected.
In two sections. We've got two things here.
These meters back here on. So they need to separate that power building. How do you get five buildings, one for each meter?
It's a disaster, just, and that's no, I'm not trying to make funny. There's thirty-one bills, and the addresses are like Zero Highway Seventy-Nine. They actually called yesterday. They were gonna turn off the power on the red light, the caution light, because it's been closed for years. The computer system just bought it. We have an account for that under a different... Apparently, when it was set up, it was set up as Zero Highway Seventy-Nine Chipley, Florida. So they closed that one, and there's one Zero Highway Seventy-Nine Vernon, Florida. And I'm like, you can't turn off the red, the red light. So, so there's nothing. Now, I did meet with Mr. Baldwin, who's our representative, and he said he was gonna try to, this was about a month ago, and he was gonna try to get some kind of clarification, because I asked him, I don't even know which building's A or B. I'm gonna assume this is A, but you know what assuming is, so I can't say that this is A. And it would be better for everything to have a religion, you know, its own address, instead of Zero Seventy-Nine.
Are there meter numbers on that bill?
There's account numbers on the bill, but not meter numbers on the bill, because that's what we were... I actually walked out there to try to see if I could find them, so I could tell what was what, and I cannot.
My understanding is there's two meters on that meter bank right there. One runs the front hallway, and the second one runs the
Everything else.
Community center and every, all the other buildings.
The gym and all.
All of it.
I got five breaker boxes in my building.
You got what?
I got five breaker boxes in my building.
I'm talking about meter box, yeah. So I'm talking about the meter box in, it's running his shop.
In my shop.
The gym, and his shop.
That's probably the increase is the lights in the gymnasium, which we're replacing with LEDs, so that's gonna go down.
But it's only lights, because you don't have AC or anything else in there.
Well, I'm sorry, the basketball gym.
Right, right.
We've been, because we've been open for that, so the lights in there.
But you only have lights. You don't have AC.
In my, yes, ma'am, in the building, it's only, it's only lights.
Are we planning on putting AC and heat in there?
No. Like, at most, I may put one or two in the little small...
Are you gonna do exercise, and then you go, hell?
Honestly, that, that brick wall with the concrete, it doesn't fluctuate much at all. Like, I, literally, in the last three years, there may be three days where in the middle of the summer, where I get in there, and it's hot enough, we have to open the doors and kick fans on. But outside of that, it doesn't fluctuate that much. So we, we really didn't need air conditioning. And the air conditioners that were in it were old three-phase, high voltage, that we could, there's no way you would wanna run them things anyways.
If the city does plan for future renting out this building, this room, this room, that, different buildings, they should have the power separated anyway.
I thought some of the...
In my thought.
One time.
There's just two.
I thought someone had, Jason, don't somehow have meters? I thought they said they were...
There's just two, yes.
There's two meters out there, one of this building.
Everything else.
Now, go ahead.
The community center, one, probably one meter. The ex-Tim's building, the gymnasium, and Jason's building. Should be like four buildings on one meter.
Now, it looks like they planned on it. There's plenty of meter cans out there with no meters in them, and it looks like they're almost there.
They did talk about doing separate meters back there. When this lady had came, she was going to do, she was gonna go in that old home ec room, the one that does the cans herself, and she wanted that old home ec room, and she was gonna open that up. And they did talk about putting meters back there, but then she didn't do that, because it was too much.
It's easy, as far as front hall rooms, that are only open when the hall is open, if the bill goes up to say, hey, you know, your grant is covered in this, you know, that's how we talk about it. But in a situation back there, and we, that's not the only separate building that we've got that could be utilized.
The old art room could be, it could be a kitchen in there.
Maybe we need to look into what it's gonna cost to separate.
If this is a special business, kind of stick to the top.
Well, we are. We're talking about power, which we gotta figure in somehow.
It's gonna be a pretty pinny, because that was a project. I'm pretty sure a grant was pulled, so it was tens of thousands of dollars, if I'm not mistaken, for that, that whole meter can, that whole, all those cans, and all that power to be redirected. And then it wasn't hooked up, but the two, because it looks like it was all designed, because that wasn't there whenever I was in high school.
No, it's, it happened sometime during the transition, that they discussed trying to separate.
I remember they talked about separating, and it was...
But for some reason, it never happened.
Because they were talking about renting the spaces out. They were talking about putting meters on every one, different meters on every building.
They thought we're not doing it, and built the thing out there, but they never done it.
They do, see?
Jason can take care of the water, and we can get electricity to come tell us what we're gonna do.
The water's got, his building's got a meter on already.
Okay. Give it, the need to be, we giving a separate reading for it, or?
Yeah. That's the easy part of everything.
And his buildings, the buildings have got nine-one-one addresses, so we can, and he's took care of that, so we can address it straight to him as that business.
If it does have that bank that y'all were describing, wouldn't the power company just come out and put a meter in at a price, of course, but just for you?
The gotcha that I ran into when I was originally looking for power was that the power isn't ran all the way to those meter cans. They're short, and so you have to either junction box it or all new lines, and that's where it, yes, it was...
He don't want to junction box it in the ground.
Well, some of them come back up into a, like, it was like a design, because they knew, they ran it to there, but then didn't run it over into the can.
Is there any wire in your meter boxes that's empty?
They're just empty. Well, there's a wire coming at one side, but it's empty, and then...
It's a pull wire.
It's pulled. It's either pull wire or the old wire, one or the other. So you're probably gonna need another twenty foot of, I mean, the wire from my, the original wire from my building was the big four wires, this big round. I mean, you're talking about fifteen thousand dollars to rewire.
So you're gonna cut out all that three-phase stuff.
Yeah.
You need to get, you need to have a list of power that you're gonna run in that building. It might be cheaper just to put a pole and a meter up there.
Yeah.
Anything you put on the ground, got to be four foot of power. And they're gonna come with...
Well, if there was a regular, like you're saying, a regular pole and a meter there, then it would be just for that particular building. He could be responsible for that bill, responsible for this water bill, and then all he would have to pose is his grant or lease, or how it's gonna be done.
That sounds perfect.
So the attorney just said to make, however you make the motion upon, um, how do I say it? Maybe upon legal approval. I don't know. I'm trying to figure out what phone it was set to.
I'm kinda like...
Subject to legal approval.
I'm kinda like Danny. If it didn't get that first year free, then I'd give you some, I mean...
Well, we need to see how much money he spent. He has no receipts that says anything. You need to bring... This is what I'm saying. We don't have a lease or anything. We need to get a lease drawn up and all of that. See how much money he spent. And come on, you can tell us. You said you had mostly your receipts and stuff, you know?
I'm not arguing that, Miss Williams.
I know, I know, we do need to get, but I'm just saying.
I agree with that.
I think that we should get the lease and stuff drawn up first. I mean, I think we can look to...
So we're shutting down because of this? Don't you?
No, we're not shutting it. I'm saying that we need to get a lease drawn.
Without a lease agreement, are we gonna shut him down?
We don't have a lease agreement.
That's what I said. Because we don't have a lease agreement, are we gonna shut him down, or are we gonna continue to let him?
According to the, excuse me, according to the attorney, her suggestion was that the mayor get with him and shut it down until we could meet.
I'm not gonna do that.
I know that, and that was the answer that was received. And so that's why the insurance was requested, so at least the city would be covered, and then we could make a decision. I had no, no desire to shut the business down. I just want us to be doing the right thing here. Else, next week, we're gonna have somebody go in one of these other buildings out here and put up shop and say, hey, I'm here, pay to get me out, like a squad. I don't wanna see that happen. I want the city to be covered, and that's what we're supposed to do. That's our job, so... It's, I'm thrilled for y'all.
We also knew that we, and I'm, and I'm not trying to argue with him, we also knew that this business was coming. He's been working on, he's been working on that for over, for several years.
I didn't know.
For several years.
Because I thought when he said he was getting the jam, I thought he was doing it for, this is what I really thought. I thought that he was doing it jam for the kids around there or something.
That's not the gym we're talking about.
I'm not talking about the gym. I'm talking about his gym. When he said that he was gonna get some equipment to go into a gym, I thought it was for the, for the children. I didn't know. I didn't know it was a personal gym. Let me say that. I did not know. I did not know that.
Fair enough, Miss Williams.
I didn't know that it was personal, okay? I didn't know it was a business, should I say it that way? I did not know. I'm just being honest. I didn't know. Since somebody called me, and I was like, I don't know nothing about it, because I didn't.
And anytime that the gyms have been mentioned, I thought we were talking about the gym, the basketball gym. So there's really been no discussion about this. That's why I...
Maybe call it the fitness center or something else.
We've got a name for it now.
Oh, he has a name for it. He's, he has it.
So, but we just need to figure out what we're gonna do as far as having a game drawn up.
Well, you do have a rentable space that you didn't have three years ago.
Yes.
A space that is now rentable. If he moves out any year, you could turn around and rent it to someone else. So he definitely deserves that credit.
Well, my thing is, why don't we do this, this is what I suggest. Why don't we, nobody told him to move out or shut down. Continue on until we get the lease and stuff drawn up and come up with the... What we are going to charge and all of that, because that has to be in the lease, even though we're not charged, it still has to be in there, okay? And let him continue. We're not saying shut him down, but what we're saying is, continue to do what you're doing until, but we still need to get this lease signed and everything.
That's why you're here tonight.
Who's writing the lease?
My attorney. The attorney. We don't write it.
I know, last June or May, at a meeting, this was brought up about discussion, and he invited everyone to come out there and see what he did. So that's in your records, you were there, that it was at a meeting.
I know it might have been here for me, but I wasn't, but I did.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
Well, and I believe that that's why, I know, I know that's why I said, well, I did about anytime that the gym's been discussed, I was under the understanding that it was the workman.
No, he talked specifically about getting the equipment.
Yeah.
And different things.
No, not that I remember. I'm not saying it didn't happen, but I don't recall, but I just know there's been discussion about the gym.
And maybe I thought it was just a regular gym too. I don't know. If he said gym, I probably did think it was that gym.
He did mention about the equipment and stuff like that.
Because he invited us, yeah, because he invited us back there, and that's when I went back with mayor, and we walked through that whole building. and we walked through that whole building and he was pointing out different things he was doing and assets that, uh, they were putting up. It was amazing. And then, you know, we were talking about the community and how they would benefit and, you know, it was, it was a great little, but I think the mayor and I were the only two people living back there with him.
I did hear that invitation. I did. Okay, I did hear it. I don't remember.
At this point, it really doesn't matter.
It don't matter about that.
Decide what we're going to do.
That don't matter.
And get it on paper. I mean, that, that's the purpose of the meeting is to decide what we're gonna do and get it on paper. So everybody's legal, everybody's covered, and we can move on.
So just to throw this out there, maybe the motion could be something like he has leased for a year, paid his water and power and reevaluate before the lease is up in a year.
Starting in January one.
Yeah, and that gives y'all time to just, to get together and decide a price at the end of that year.
But we still need a lease.
Well, that's what the lease would say.
Yeah, okay. We still need that, okay.
Yeah.
Don't hide.
Of this year.
Yeah, cause he's already.
Are you gonna try and, um, get a post and your own meter now for your own light bill?
The city will do that.
The city will do it?
The city will do it and, um, it'll be addressed to him.
Oh.
That's, that's the way I see it.
The city should do it because if he moves out.
Well, if he moves out, it's our building, yeah, will benefit from it.
Then it's the legal aspect of you got a dollar deed to property and, and all that.
Okay. That sounds like a win-win for everybody.
So the council's agreeable to setting it up for a free lease? He pays his own water and lots?
Yes.
Is he agreeable? Are you agreeable with that?
Are you agreeable with that?
I mean, that, that's my, my gosh, I'm not here to try to get anything for free. I'm not here to try to get anything from this. I mean, if I get it, y'all have costs. I will gladly cover those costs. Uh, while I'm here, I'm gonna continue to work on the outside. The outside of the building still needs, I've got ten more windows. I've got ten windows I've still gotta replace in the thing to keep the moisture from coming in. And so I'm gonna continuously be working on it and these other people that are gonna be leasing these up front aren't gonna have that obligation. So all I'm asking for is to be, that to be considered in when you start thinking through a price. Because if you start, I mean, just to be fair, a thousand dollars a month for a building that size, um, that's kill, that's killing into where I'm no longer making money. I'm actually losing money and then I'm not gonna be able to stay there for very long. Uh, because like you said, there's not gonna, there's not that many people in Vernon in this area that are gonna give me massive amounts of profit. My goal was just to have something there that continues to help me get my money back that I put into it, but then make this property and around the gym and, cause we're gonna have these kids going in all that gym left and right right there. Um, so that's where we started inside and we've slowly started working our way out and we will continue to work our way out. Um, and that's, that's all I'm asking for. I'm not, I'm not asking for anything for free by any means. Um, obviously, y'all do the one year like you're talking about and that'll allow me, if I get any sort of profit, to get some money back in my pocket because of what I paid out of my, my own, my own two and then the hours I put into it, so. But that, that's why I'm here is just to complete that conversation and we can go and go back and forth on however, whatever y'all suggest.
This is about the yes or no answer. She didn't ask you to explain yourself. She didn't. She said, are you agreeing with what, I meant to what we've said.
Say it.
You said for the year and then we can, we can discuss during that year on what the.
Yes.
And that's what you, that's what you pay in your water bill and that's getting a power pole put up and you being responsible for your own electric and water through the year.
Uh, how are you gonna handle the power until that moves?
Well, you're using it now, ain't you?
You're using it now.
Wait, I'm just saying something.
We ain't got no idea what it is.
Now, I said we don't, then I, what I just said, you're using it now? What's the difference?
But we want to get.
We're using it now. We don't have any price now, do we? No, so what's the big deal?
To be honest with you, like I said, those lights in that gym, the old lights, they're, they're what's burning, because they're the same thing as kicking the lights on at the baseball field baseballs. And you see how much baseball field costs a month when we're running those lights and so that's most likely what they're doing.
I'll get with you after.
I don't, the only issue that I see is that I don't think that we can actually say from January first legally.
Can't back, I wouldn't back that yet.
No, it has to start from now.
I mean, it does, it doesn't matter, but we just, I think we should start from now. He's in there. He's got the insurance turned in.
We could pose it to the attorney.
If she says we can do it, then we can back pay it.
We'll do it as well. It'll be from, I guess, today.
Well, you didn't pay for January anyway, so what's the difference? Let it go. You know what I'm saying? Just let it go. You're not paying for January, so let it go. That's all.
So. Depending on the attorney's decision on the date, do I have a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve, whatever you say.
Mr. Garner's, um, business, um, for one year, a free lease with him paying his own power and lots. And we'll have the attorney draw it up as soon as possible. You're in agreement? Sir?
Well, from a public relations point of view, I would not use the word free because he's, he's, he's giving you fair value in exchange for that, that one year. So I would suggest you just put at, at no cost to offset his, his expenses. When you say free, it sounds like you're giving him something. It doesn't sound like he's getting it for free.
Okay, free.
Yeah, okay.
Because when you go to pay for one of those windows, we're gonna have to pick you up off the ground out there.
And you don't want somebody coming in later saying, hey, well, you gave him free rent and it's free, because it's not free. He, he, he's definitely paying his share here, so.
In exchange for time and money spent.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve, uh, the lease in exchange for time and money spent with, um, the business no days off gym for one year? With him, Mr. Garner being responsible for his water and light payment?
I make the motion.
Yeah, I'm sticking it.
It's no sick days?
No, I'm sorry. No sick days.
We need what you're trying to say.
We don't get days off either.
That's what I was saying. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, motion taken. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion adjourned.
Adjourned.
Sorry, get out.
Over that east corner of that.